What's up? I sent you that email.
Hi, Doherty. How are you? How are you? So, some of our contractors, if they're sub or above a certain level, this is hard stuff. You're required to list every day all the subs on the contract. Like, in big construction projects, you have to list all the subs. But come up with a certain percentage. Once it gets over 30%, you have to list your subs. A lot of our contractors, you know, have a good subject, and I just put some in. So, I don't kind of hold out a favor.
Right.
Yeah. I mean, people spend their budgets really on case on part-time contracts. So, some of them. As far as this guy goes, I know this guy in business. He probably has more than one reason. Thanks. As long as he's done, I love his fish food at this point in time. It's just a blur. We get a report. You know, a couple of years ago, it's been told, it was a choice of four. So, I think in my life, it's certainly something like that. Yeah. It's all six. You never know to, if they should find out. I have some on, but I have some on. I don't know. Well, I saw much of it come, you know, back home. I think you have to take control of it. It's a good use of it. There's a lot of stuff that we don't really know. No, no, no. I'm not sure if I can.
My name?
Well, no, I mean, that's another subject to talk about. That is a whole different subject. But, you know, as far as you, I think that you have to see what we're going to do. Most probably, especially on the level of, you know, taking a lot of these people where they're working. It's kind of historic, to me, from which I always wanted to make money. And that stuff. In your mind, there's people that are out there that say, "We should go build this stuff." But the most of them have never even worked out the specifics. I'm sorry, you know, the time is all personal. You see, it's sitting right there. Remember, in building, I remember, he was working seeing voices from the higher tech and such. That's a good way to see it. You'll see it virtually. Should he talk to you about it at all? Like, here, let's have a look at those. And some of them, it's, it's good. They got, you know, get those work out. In the pipeline, it's supposed to be a lot of that. You see money? Yeah. John, is yours? This is yours. Washington Post, it's a reward. I understand. I do understand. The debate goes on. I know. Sure, I know. And I thought I had last week's something for the. Your hobbies again. I can't be there if anything. Yeah. So, it looks like Reed's headed for the. Yeah. Where is Fred Jett? Interesting that Fred would call, that he worked for a foundation. Oh, yeah. About, yeah, the green button.
Okay. Let's get started. Can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
Certainly.
And a second. Let's vote. John?
Oh, I thought I did.
You moved it. All right. Great. So, this is a workshop to begin the planning process for the 2011-12 district budget. Superintendent Koba?
Thank you, President Barrera. Based on some discussions among staff and looking at where we are with the budget development cycle, we wanted to set the table today for exactly what's in front of us based on what we know today. And that's recognizing there's no budget, there's no clarity on the jobs bill, SDA is still hung out there, any number of things. But what do we know? Where could we go? Phil and the team have put together a presentation. I see this as a starting point. Tomorrow night, we begin the town hall discussions. We'll be at San Diego High, and there are 10 of those that we're going to do through late October. Bernie's added a 10th one. We're going to go to the charter schools and talk at one session at Darnell late in the cycle. But we've got to start now. It's not too early. And get your feedback a little bit tonight. But we're going to break out into teams to start getting behind the numbers. I've already talked individually CFO, HR, and other members, as well as business and academic. But we have to really start the scrubbing. Given what we can validate, we know now, and anticipation of some decisions are going to come between now and the next several months. So, I'd like to turn it over to Phil to begin that discussion.
Right. Thank you.
Good evening, President Barrera, members of the board, Mr. Koba and staff. In Greek mythology. Uh-oh. I got to have my two, my hydra, my two-minute preamble here.
Use that humanities degree. Come on. Use that humanities degree.
I took seven years of Greek.
That's right.
In college and seminary. You got to let me use it.
These preambles are your Achilles' heel.
In Greek mythology, Sisyphus, Sisyphus, the king of Corinth, was compelled by the gods to spend eternity pushing a large boulder up a mountain. Getting to the top, only to see it roll down, requiring him to do it again and again. While it seems like an eternity, we are in the process of pushing a boulder, making reductions in spending for the fifth year. We began with a mid-year cut in 2007, 2008, and are tonight beginning the process for 2011-12. Each year, we begin a little earlier, we cut a little deeper, and we regret a little more the cuts that must be made. Next year presents a situation where we must cut 23% of all the resources we have that can be used to eliminate this deficit. Of those resources, 92% touch the classroom, and 96% are people-related. We have just about cut all the non-personnel items that we possibly can. 2011-12 will be the year of the personnel cuts. I regret having to tell you this, but it is a sad and a serious truth. I am confident that we will all push the boulder together. It is easy for any one of us to stand aside proclaiming that it isn't our boulder to push, or it shouldn't be our hill to climb. How much better a task it would be, though, if we unite together in this traumatic time to accomplish what we have to do. Perseus was also a king in Greek mythology. His life was a difficult experience with many battles and much trauma. The Clash of the Titans, the recent movie, was written about his life. He overcame many trials, yet today, when we think of doing the same, we think of Perseus. We persevere. It is my hope that together we can indeed persevere through this, maintain our vision, and rely on each other to help push the boulder. What we'd like to do tonight very quickly is just go over the challenges, some of our potential solutions that have been developed by staff, quickly review some issues, review timelines, and just move forward into this process, as I said earlier, than we have ever done before in this process. Part of the reason that we have to do this earlier is because by December 15th this year, we must provide the county a list of our reductions, a timeline for implementation of actions, and we have to include the milestones, which, again, is the salient points within the timeline, all the kinds of reductions we have to do, the letters we have to send out, all of that kind of thing. But a list of reductions for 2012-13 is not required. Now, what are our realities? We have to cut $141.6 million. That is assuming that the governor signs AB 184 and we get the SDA revenue. So, we're counting on that in our projections. Our options are limited. Classrooms are going to be impacted more than in the past. We won't be able to say that we're going to keep this away from the classrooms as we have in the past. We do have an uncertain outcome of the parcel tax. We don't know what happened there. The federal jobs revenue, it looks like we will be getting it, but we're also getting some counsel from folks in Sacramento and in our own county, that it's very possible that the state will give the money with the left hand and during the budget cycle, with revenue limits, reduce it with the right hand. So, we don't know the true outcome of that. We have no guarantee that the federal jobs revenue will be a net increase in revenue for the district. We also know that even if the governor signs the SDA revenue, which will go towards our special education students, we will have to restore $12.4 million of that next year to bring our reserve back to the 2% level, which we haven't, which we don't have this year. We have no adopted state budget, and our word also, as of last weekend, is that the state revenues are under what they had projected they would be as well. You know, you're familiar, I won't take the time here, you all are familiar with these from your years on the board. We do have to identify our process for a particular kind of service, reductions for the certificated staff. It's very likely there will be certificated administrative reassignments needed, vice principals, for example. We have to identify classified reductions, timeline, provide notice, all those kind of things. We do have some realities, whether our labor contracts, our contracts are settled, they're closed. We have contractual caps on class sizes. We have minimum requirements within our allocation formula in the contracts, and elementary prep time is built into the contract as well. So, we have some realities from a contractual basis. In previous years, in the previous four years we've been doing this, we've done a lot of moving expenses into restricted resources. We moved people, other expenses into restricted resources. We've utilized all of our surplus balances from our other funds. We've taken advantage of state flexibility. We've used our stimulus funds, and we've used our reserves, quite frankly, to cover deficit spending. We no longer are able to utilize those methods because all of those pots of money and the pools that we have to draw from are shrinking. So, we must now focus more strongly than ever on elimination of expenses to balance the budget. Now, all of those things I just mentioned in no way imply that we didn't cut any expenses in previous years. We have eliminated hundreds of people, both on the certificated side and the classified side. We've reduced our materials and supplies by probably close to 60%. Contracts, we've pulled millions and millions of dollars. I don't know the exact number, but I would say at least $10 million at a minimum out of our contract amount. So, we have reduced and reduced and reduced, but we've had these other capabilities to draw from to look at balancing our budget. Now, we have a situation where we're presenting you a picture here of our total general fund. The unrestricted side, the left side there, slide, is the portion that we kind of, sort of, have to meet this deficit. And I'll explain why I say kind of, sort of, in just a minute. The red portion is the portion of our unrestricted budget and our restricted budget that we have, we have to work with. And it's personnel, it's personnel, it's personnel, whether it's on the school sites, whether it's on the restricted or the unrestricted side. You see, the school sites get the biggest lion's share. We've cut the central office. People say, "Well, just cut the fat, cut the excess in the central office." If you can see, our central office down, on the unrestricted side, is down to $52 million. If we cut our central office three times, we would just barely, completely re-eliminated it. We would barely cover the amount that we need to cut on the unrestricted side. On the restricted side, it's down to $5 million, which is astonishing from where it was just years ago. So, our school sites, the red portion there, as you see, take up the vast majority of the funds that we have available. Now, the right-hand portion there, we're not going to talk about much tonight because that $482 million cannot be used, as it says, for the reductions that we're talking about. Our problem is in the unrestricted side, and our base pool is $688 million. However.
Hold on just a second, Phil. We want Mr. to back and then Ms. Jackson.
And I'd like to.
Interestingly, this information we're talking about, and I think when I speech out that, you had that, I think, with that. When I hear this slide here, page seven, the number shows a reserve of 4%. Your restricted side shows a reserve of 10%. That's not consistent with the statements about reserves. And as soon as you go there, I'm going to have emails all over the place about why the hell this little is presenting, you know, 4%, 100% reserve.
10% reserves and claiming they're down to .67% reserves in the first place. That's so ridiculous. Off what we're talking about, that I can't explain it. I honestly cannot explain it. You could, and the graphic, it's going to come back to Bernie really bad. Some of you guys want to scam me, and I'm not going to be able to explain it. So, I'm with it, because I'm not happy when I see stuff that can turn around and bite you.
Our reserves on the unrestricted side, the 4%, are all of the reserves of the district that are included. The reserve for economic uncertainty, that reserve that we're required to keep for the unexpected emergency is the .67%. However, we have other reserves that we keep and maintain district-wide, both on the restricted and the unrestricted side.
Nobody out there cares. I'm going to tell you, what I'm saying is that you may be able to explain it, but they're not going to be able to explain it. The media's not going to be able to explain it, and I can't explain it. So, when we put our graphics up, we ought to put our graphics up that mean exactly what the conditions are, and not something that somebody can bite into and say, "Look at you guys, you're not telling the truth."
Okay.
I'm just saying, you know, I know where I am, and I know where I live, and I know who's coming after me. So, the point is, I need to have the kind of presentation that is so easy to understand that the public doesn't misuse it. And I'm saying, this is easy to misuse. I could do it, and I won't. But, you know, I know it's going to be misused.
I agree with that, but my concern here is with the comment you made at the very end about the restricted. We have moved things in and out of the restricted side of the house for years, including your position last year. And I asked that question, why would your position place unrestricted funds? The board decides what is restricted and what is not restricted. So, to say that we cannot use these funds is not appropriate. I think the appropriate term to say is that we have to be careful how we use those funds, and those should only be used for things that they're supposed to be used for. And that's why today, at the morning meeting, I said I would like to have a list of what items are unrestricted funds and how are they determined to be included in restricted funds. Because in this economic crisis, one thing that really should happen is all the restricted funds should be heading out to the schools, because that's what all of them are given to as far. There's very few, which is on our property side, facility side, that is not given for a particular item in the educational system. But, so, restricted funds really should be all out to the school sites, except for what is required to be reserved by law for those programs.
Right.
Third question.
If I could interject for a minute. We will break out the reserves so that it's clear. There is more than just the reserve for economic uncertainty, and that was the required payment to cover the SDA. So, that's one action we'll take here. This was meant to give you a very high level, not to confuse, but to keep it high level, but we'll break that down. As far as the restricted side of this, this is the restricted portion of the general fund. In some conversations, when you talk about restricted funds, you are in the other funds. That's technically what the construction or the bond funds are, adult education and all that. So, we just have to be careful with the words. I realize we can get this complicated very quickly. I think that the point of the brief, though, of this slide was to show you that the portion that's under duress is the general fund unrestricted and at a high level to show preponderances in our campuses, because over the years, that's what we have been safeguarding as our first priority. But we'll take aboard the need for additional information. This is just the first go-around.
Yeah. My question was regarding the restricted funds. We saw some movement in the categorical funds that we had that were shifted by the legislature. Is there any opportunity within these restricted funds that the legislature could open some of that up?
They could. The restricted funds that we have flexibility on, in this chart, show over on the unrestricted side because they are now Tier 3 funds, and we have to report them to the state as unrestricted. That's a requirement now.
I'm wondering, though, but within the restricted funds that are in the general fund, I'm not talking about the category for the others, but in within this, is there any way that that can be loosened up at all?
Well, the.
If we approach the legislature, if we broke that down, or is it all simply, I mean, is it tied up in contracts?
It's Title II, it's Title I, it's the stabilization, the stimulus dollars, it's special ed, it's EIA, it's the grants that we get. So, there's not a whole lot of room there for movement or flexibility. All of our local funds that we have, our property management fund, our school food service fund, those kind of funds.
Those are separate categoricals. Yes, I know that. Yes. Yes, that I know, having worked on the budget book.
Yeah.
So, but the inset through all these budgets. But I'm just wondering if we should consider some sort of an approach on these restrictive funds, since we saw some movement, you know, last year for the first time, and evaluating if there's any way that we can reorganize. I mean, we're in such dire straits right now.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Page eight. Page eight. We showed you on page seven that the total unrestricted portion of our balances are $688 million. Of that $688 million, $42 million we're defining as fixed costs. Those are costs that we cannot in any significant way impact. The interest that we have to pay on our transnotes, our licenses for our software, utility costs, that type of thing. And then the required reserves that we have in total, and when you subtract that from the 688, it leaves us $615 million approximately that we have to make the $141, $142 million cut. So, then we've tried to show you the breakdown of that $614 million at the school sites and at the central office. So, you'll see that $562.4 million of it is money that serves students at the schools, and 52.46 is central office. And we broke it down among those categories. If you look at the school site portion of it and add the certificated and the classified salaries, that's 96% of the total portion of the unrestricted funds that are available to us that are at the school sites. In the central office, 92.4% are in salaries and benefits as well. And when you add them all together, it represents 96%, as I said earlier, of the total dollars that we have available. So, again, the concept of reducing the central office, that's going to solve the problem, cutting the fat out from there. It doesn't work because 8.5% is at the central office. And as you can see from the charts back on page seven, again, we do have only 1% of those restricted funds at the central office. So, the vast majority are going in either into reserves and to fixed costs or to the school sites.
Mr. Stover, one question here, because we're talking about money to school sites and money to central office. And I think we need to clarify that central office, again, this category includes more than just the people in this building. That, in fact, there are services that go directly to school sites, correct?
Yes.
Landscapers, if I'm not mistaken, or some sorts of direct school services. So, I just don't want people to have impression that 91.5% is going to school sites and 8.5% is going to this building or a couple of buildings. But, in fact, those are for centralized services that are going out to the school sites. I mean, there's actual central offices payroll and all that.
Yes. There are, there are folks who are budgeted centrally and who spend most of their time serving the school sites. Now, we've done our best to move some of them over to the school site category if they are full-time placed in a school. But Nellie has some.
Well, that's the story, though, because, look, when people are talking about, when people are talking about a cost, and we're saying, for example, and I'm going to use one that's real popular, the VAPA costs are central. Now, it shows in a central office under certificated salaries and benefits. It's got to be shown as a school support cost. It can't be shown in that. This is an accounting business, not a rational business about what helps kids, okay? Now, if I'm going to match up some numbers, I'm not going to be able to go into, let's say, central office certificated salaries unless I look at those certificated salaries that aren't direct benefits to kids. Now, I know the accounting, but I don't care about the accounting. I've got to make policy decisions around what goes to help children, not what offices there are or where the cost codes are located. And see, this is the deceptive part of this, and John's right about that. If you can't get that information out clearly, then we're always going to be in the same battle. And I know how it can work. What it can do is, it can say, "Well, all central office is protected because of those folks that are centrally funded to serve kids, and therefore you can't attack it at all because that's untouchable." That's not going to work either. So, when we get down to the, I'll call it the bottom line identification of what this district has to do in order to help the kids succeed, which is our mission, we can't leave people mixed in together with, I'll call it, non-instructional support. We can't do it. And it may be traditional, it may be a good accounting practice, but as far as I'm concerned, as a policy decision-maker around what's good for kids, I can't have it.
The VAPA program is a very good example. I'm glad you mentioned that, because there are several people that provide leadership to the VAPA program in the central office that supervise the program. There then are approximately 30 teachers who travel around the district providing direct services to children in the VAPA program. We have split those out. So, the 30 teachers providing the service to the students are on the school sites.
That's deceptive in itself. Because you're, let me point this out. You can't run a school without supervision, right? How could you run VAPA without supervision? You're saying something that doesn't make sense. What you're saying is, it's okay for schools to have whatever they've got, and they've got, let's say, people that are out of classroom. But those people are out of classroom at the schools are okay because schools have to have them. But you have to have management of central office support for schools. You cannot run a program that you fund centrally by throwing the teachers out there and not having anybody at the center manage it. You might as well just send all the people out to the schools and say, "The heck with the managers." And if that's what your intent is, then that's what this budget discussion has its center around. See? So, the only way to do this is to either prorate the supervision of the school site support that comes from the central office, and that's a cost accounting problem, which I don't know if you're ready to do, or you have to just say, "Wait a minute, I'm going to break out of all of the centralized, certificated, central office staff supervision of school site programs." You got to do one or the other. You can't have it by just lumping them together. It won't work for me, and I don't think it'll work for the public either.
Yeah, but that clarifies my point about that some of the things have been moved over to the school site.
We tried very carefully to, regardless of the fact of where the dollars are budgeted, we broke this down by the services that are provided, so that if the services are provided to the students at the schools, they would be on the left-hand side, the school site side. If they are not directly providing services to schools, to students, then they're on the right-hand side.
Right. And I just want to clarify, too, the fact that someone is in this very central category does not mean that we do not need them. I mean, all of our teachers working in the schools obviously need to have a payroll department who can process their checks and so forth. So, it's just, but it's breaking out, it's central office or it's school site.
But it would be the same thing as if you took all the school site administrative and plugged it into the central office. You didn't do that, but see, that's also a possibility, isn't it? I mean, you could say, "Well, there's a certain amount of administration that goes on, there's no direct contact with kids at sites, therefore let's move all the site VPs and principals back into the central office because they stand for administration." It's the same logic you're using when you talk about prorating out or putting something in one place or the other. I mean, you know, that is a part of the discussion. You. You made assumptions that we would understand it, and I'm saying, no, we don't, and I don't think the public does either.
Okay. All right, the general fund unrestricted challenge, this shows you that of the total $688 million, the people costs are really the blue and the red portion, the green costs are the non-personnel costs. If we had looked at this four years ago, it would have been, the green portion would have been significantly larger. We have reduced and reduced our non-personnel costs. So again, it leads me to believe that we cannot make these reductions without taking into consideration the people that are working for us, their costs and their expenses. It's a very, very difficult situation.
And the only point that I would add to that is the percentage of personnel costs has risen as a percentage of the unrestricted budget, but personnel costs themselves have fallen. We have fewer people making less money with less expensive benefits. So what's happening is the budget's been shrinking in total. What we've tried to do is protect the people who touch kids, and those options are narrowing. And I think that's what the green-
That's the point.
That's exactly the point. Yeah, if we, if, once we have made these reductions for next year, our general operating budget will be close to a billion dollars. It won't be very far above that. When we started this, it was well over 1.2, approaching 1.3, so the reductions have been dramatic.
So basically, we've reduced the personnel costs significantly and we've reduced the non-personnel costs even more?
Right. Yes, yes. The last time, the last time our, we looked it up this afternoon, the last time our general operating budget approached a billion dollars was 2004, 2004, 2005? Yeah, 2004, '05.
When we had 125,000 students.
So, all right, this is a list of budget solutions that we are offering you. We have here clearly identified our 141.6 million. This list represents a total of about $141 million. We've tried to break it down into categories for you to look at. And let me say a couple of things about the list. This is a list that incorporates many of the things that you've looked at before and have not chosen to reduce. It includes everything that, working in collaboration with the staff, we could believe are actually cuttable that don't involve negotiations. There's nothing here that we believe involves negotiation. Consultation, yes, but not negotiation. So we're looking at those things that are in that $615 million that we believe could go towards this deficit situation. I will not, I wouldn't insult you by saying that we tried to develop this list in a way that didn't impact the schools, didn't impact the students. We can't tell you that there is no negative impact because we would have to tell you that there is a negative impact with these cuts. It's not a cut list that we want to defend. It is a cut list that we believe is the reality of what has to be done to solve the deficit situation for next year. We literally, hours and hours and hours, with many, many people in the room, from academic side, from the business side, the finance side, HR side, we could not come up with a lot of other things that offer us a lot of alternatives. We did try, for the most part, these are eliminations of the program, eliminations of the category of personnel. In a few cases, they are reductions as well. If, for example, the vice principal allocation, we reduced by 50% instead of allocating it. It was just a broad-based consensus that we could not eliminate all vice principals, especially at the large high schools, so we reduced that. The majority of the reductions are indeed eliminations of the particular program or the particular offering to the students that we have. This list, if you accept this list in its entirety, it will just barely, assuming everything stays the same, the state cuts nothing more, all of our projections come to pass, would just barely solve the problem. So we present it to you as a rather sobering list of reality. Then we have, and we won't take time, but we do have some timelines for you.
Well, before you skip all the whole list, I think we should have a moment to comment about this list.
Sure.
Okay. My understanding from what you just said earlier, and I apologize to my peers, I said I wasn't going to speak too much tonight.
I'll lower it down.
However, the list that you provided to is equal almost the amount that we are deficit. And it does not include a lot of things. I, and I'm only speaking as one board member, I have a problem with being given a list that just balances what the staff feels that we need to cut. Everything should be on this list, everything. There's nothing spared. And so what I see here is a lot of school programs. Okay, so I'm going to just, you know, nothing personal against any of the staff, but our mission here, what I believe our mission is, first and foremost, is to educate students. That's first and foremost, okay? Now, if you give me a choice between cutting gate and cutting communications, guess who's going to get cut? Communications. You give me a choice between cutting some finance and cutting police, guess who's going to get cut? Finance, okay? So I don't, that is my vision. My vision is that we have to protect the schools. We have to protect the classrooms. And I know that the staffing will say, we're tight in HR, we're tight in finance, we're tight in other areas, but the bottom line is, all of these cuts, most of these cuts that you have put here protect certain entities. And I'm going to tell you, I'm not protecting any entity except for the classroom where the students are. That is our number one business. And so if you're asking us to accept this list because at the end you say, staff must prepare immediately off of the impact of these reductions on page 13. So it gives the impression that you want us to say, this is kind of okay, so staff can go ahead and get started. And this is one board member saying, this is not okay. We need to go back to the table and put everything on it and bring everything to the board. It's not a staff decision, no offense, staff, we want your input. But the bottom line is this is the board decision, it's what we elected to do. And when you put out things like this, it goes out to the public, people saying, oh, they're going to cut gate, they're going to cut athletics. You have no idea what happens to us in that situation. And that is not even our idea. But people naturally saying, the board wants to do something, and this is not the board's recommendations or thoughts. These are staff thoughts, okay? And I'm just, on record, that I think that we need more solutions that involve other offices. There is nothing restricted in this entity right now, okay? That's just my thought.
I have to chime in on that. I, you know, just having these as our choices again and again and again. I think we need to look, this is early, we're not starting early so that we can get people used to the idea that these things are going to get cut. We don't want to normalize these decisions. We need to put everything on the table and, you know, it is absolutely true, that's our mission, is to protect the schools and to protect the classrooms. And people expect a certain amount of services with their school. Our mission is the education of the children. And I know, I'm looking at the three of you, and I couldn't think of three kinder people, you know, and I, but we can't, I'm not going to say this is okay. I'm not going to say that this is acceptable. I'm not going to say that this would be what I would cut. And I think it's just too early to start narrowing things down. I agree. And it is, you know, that's, again, we need to keep focused on what it is we are here to do and stick to the knitting. And if it means elimination of things that have long been held sacred or that people think necessary, we simply have to learn how to do it smarter, more efficiently, use the internet, use a computer, whatever it is that we've got, all of the skills that we've got. So it's just too early. You know, we didn't start this early again to get people used to the idea. So I'm not signing off and saying, yeah, this is what we're going to do either, okay?
Yeah, well, there's also something that's not, I think I sent out a memo, what's not on this list is significant. You know, what's not on this list is, represents a, I'll call it, insulation by whoever made the list of what their priorities were, not the board's priorities, okay? So I'll fault it, and I'm supporting what I'm hearing from the others. I think that not having a full board discussion of all the options is basically bad. But the other part of it is, there's no recommendation in here about midterm correction. We have the ability to make changes at the semester. We can roll over savings beyond, you know, we can actually admit, you know, I know, make people furious, I'm not, we're not talking what makes people happy, and I'm not happy about the whole thing at all. But the point is that we still can't ignore the fact that there are options that we aren't even considering, which is what do we do about mid-year cuts? What do we do about this year's budget? Okay? And I'm, you know, sure, I might be hard to get along with on those, but at least the fact that we have them on the table is something we need to consider. You know, we also have to have criteria. For example, all of these things have, you know, what you're going to do, one through whatever number they are, but the thing that bothers me is there's no criteria for why you do it. And I'll use an example, although again, it'll make somebody mad, I usually get myself in trouble anyway when I talk, but we have programs for kids that cost twice as much as other programs do. They're not on this list. You know, the usual gate comes up because it's a little kind of piece, but if you talk about the actual cost per pupil of gate, it's a very low cost compared to some of the other ones, including a whole lot of our alternative school programs, a whole bunch of other stuff. And if I'm, I'm back to the wall and I'm saying, you know, no, I've got to care about kids, I may even be in the condition where I might have to say, close schools where they cost more per kid than other schools out of the general fund. Now, that brings up a whole, you don't even have that list in front of me. I don't know it. Like, you know, I've got some of it stashed away in my records and a lot of it here, but the point is that that's not even there. So therefore, when we talk about cuts and you say programs, I say, wait a minute, you've got high-cost schools, not just programs, schools. And yeah, I just imagine the phone calls I'm going to get. But you could take the people that are in these highest-cost programs and put them to other schools and reduce class size or protect class size. You know, but if you don't ever put them in the list, then what we're going to do is we're going to go down this thing and say, oh yeah, well, there's 140 million. It's easy for me to say, yeah, let's do the 140 million. There's no thinking involved, no priority setting involved, and that's what we're supposed to be elected to do. So I'm not going to go there. I just honestly agree that this list is minimalist, pre-selects other people's priorities than mine, and I want to see the whole doggone thing. And nothing sacred, absolutely nothing.
If I could mention to the board, it sounds like we're in a mid-January discussion about forcing a decision. With all due respect, this is supposed to be the first discussion, and we are getting feedback from you. And that's what's good about all of this. There are nobody's priorities here. These are some of the prior issues that have come up. There's no excuse, that's what they are. There are other things that we can do and will do. John, to your point about there's no atypical schools here that are high-cost, yes, but there is a line that says to do something about school closure. I mean, you've just provided us with some feedback that we could use. We will come back around with more thoughts, more areas. I mean, we will show you that the HR department, the finance department, the IT department will all be on the list. You'll see all of that. So there's no pre-selection here. This is a starting point for a discussion. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page, we're taking the notes down, we're going to come back around and-
But you're plugging in stock numbers for school closures of $450,000.
That's just a-
That sounds exactly like a whole list of things we've had before. But you can, I can identify schools where the closure would be far more than $450,000.
Sure. And even a little bit less than that, too.
Yeah.
And I guess there's one other piece, as long as you're listening, Superintendent, and that is, you know, really the advocacy up in Sacramento and bringing this home to them. I know there's, you know, joining hands with all the school districts across, you know, San Diego, or, you know, excuse me, California. But there's got to be something that we can do. And I know that we have a wonderful government relations department and that we have done some of that. But starting early, starting now, getting our partners together and talking about what this means, the economy is starting to turn, at least nationally. Maybe not, you know, it's from California quite as much, which is something else people need to understand, is that the California economy is probably going to be turning more slowly than the rest of the nation. Every time you hear, you know, economic forecasts, it starts to sound rosier, and that's not the case sitting here, you know, on the West Coast. So, but California's got to do something about the way it's funding education. And, you know, it's, you know, that advocacy is something I see missing in this document. So if we can, you know, step to that as well.
Well, I think this is a very sobering presentation, and in comparison to what we've had to do years before, it's extremely difficult. When I see the figure of the general fund unrestricted, which we have to work with, and then saying, cutting 23% out of that, that would be equivalent to sending home about 30,000 students in our district proportionally to the size of the district. That's how huge the cut is. You know, we're looking at a situation, given the current numbers, and as Ms. Nakamura said, that we still have a lot of work to do, both in terms of the public weighing in on Proposition J and the state coming up with the funding. But we're looking at having a much smaller district and the same number of students. You know, other businesses can downsize, cut down their operations and, you know, do by scale, and we're still going to have the same number of students with a lot less money. So I believe that what you're doing today is you're painting the picture of what we're I'm sure it's not 100% of the options are on this list. However, it is demonstrating this is the magnitude. And for everything that someone doesn't like that's on here, something else of equal size would have to be found. So I mean, I just see this as, we're starting very early. This is step one. It could be this list, it could be a slightly different list, and only slightly different. But whatever it is, it's going to basically change the whole nature of this district. I mean, in terms of what we believe that public schools are. We're not just talking about a little bit of an increase in class size or doing away with a few programs or laying off a few hundred people. We're talking about taking out a fourth of the money that we have to work with and the same number of students, which is basically an impossible task, which is why everybody up here is so frustrated because it is so impossible. And which is why, in agreement with Ms. Nakamura, it's, we can't do this, and so we have to work on the other side in terms of having some more revenue. We've done, we've done cutting, we've asked people what we can cut. Parents are paying for transportation, parents are paying for AP tests, we've consolidated routes, we've saved money on lunch programs, we've eliminated outside contracts, we've increased class sizes, we have hundreds, hundreds fewer teachers. We've done all kinds of things and kept the ship afloat, but at this point, we can't do it unless we have more money. And so we can't lie to people about this is how bad it's going to be if we don't get more money.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with Dr. Evans and Ms. Nakamura. I mean, if there's one thing I'm confident about with this board is, for Dr. Evans and I, as we get into our third budget, and we've got veterans that have been through a lot more than that, if there's one thing I'm confident about this board, it's that we're never going to take a list of recommendations from staff and say, okay.
Whatever you say.
Whatever you say.
Sounds good.
We are equally confident.
Right, right, right. And I'm proud of the work that we've done together over the last couple of years to keep pushing, 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 to push back at staff and say, generate options, and staff generates the options and comes back. But the reality of what, you know, Dr. Evans just said has to sink in, and it has to sink in with all of us in this community. We'll push you to come up with additional options, and you'll come up with them. And in the end, maybe that's another $5 million. And in the end, maybe that's another $5 million somewhere, or maybe another $10 million somewhere if, you know, if we really push. And it's a $140 million problem that we're trying to solve. The answer can't be, "Let's find someplace else than the options on this list." Can't be that. Where the answers are is very clear, and there's three key decision points that are coming up. This budget is based on the governor's proposed budget that he first proposed in January of this year and then revised in May. So this, these numbers, this $140 million problem that we have is based on a proposed budget that the governor made in January and then made again in May that there's still been no decision made about in Sacramento for this year, for the 10-11 budget. So one big decision is, how is the legislature and governor going to balance this year's budget? And are they going to do it in a way that agrees with the governor's proposals, which gut public education? Are they going to do it in a way with the proposals that have come out of the majority of the legislature in both houses, which protect public education? Or are they going to find somewhere in between? That's one decision point that needs to be made in Sacramento. And when we started this round of this conversation, that this $140 million hole is part of, we started it with the public actually in December of last year, when we went out to our town hall meetings. And if people have a memory for that, what we were saying at the time is, if the cuts continue the way that they had been, we were going to face somewhere upwards of a $225 million hole that we were going to have to fix, and this was the list of where we were going to have to solve that problem. Well, what the governor did is, he came out in January and made a speech where he said, "Education's too important to cut, he's going to protect public education." And then what he did is, he cut public education, not by that amount, but by an amount that just simply pushed this problem, you know, into the future. So we didn't have for this year, we didn't go off the cliff this year, but if the state budget gets passed in a way that the governor is proposing, we'll go off the cliff next year.
When he's out of office.
When he's out of office, yeah. So one decision point that the public needs to keep in mind is, how is the governor and the legislature, how are they going to balance the budget for this year? Are they going to do it in a way that guts public education, which is the governor's proposal? Are they going to do it in a way that protects public education, which is the majority of the legislature's proposal? Where are they going to come down? That's the first decision for this year. Then we've got a second decision or set of decisions that will be kicked off when the governor proposes the budget for next year, for the 11-12 year, which is what we're already considering. We don't have a governor yet who's going to do that. We don't know who that governor is going to be. But I would say that we should be making decisions, frankly, as voters, when we think about the choice that we get to make in terms of who will be that governor, who is likely to propose a budget in January that protects education, who is likely to propose a budget in January that guts education. People will make up their mind and come to different decisions, but at least I would recommend that that's a question that we, as voters, need to be asking ourselves. So that's a second decision point. What's the proposed budget for the 11-12 year going to look like, whichever new governor makes that proposal in January? And then that's going to lead to a whole new process with the legislature about actually passing a budget for 11-12. And then there's a third decision point, and that's the decision for all of us here in San Diego. Are we going to make a decision in November that we're going to bury our heads and ignore this problem and pretend it doesn't exist? Or are we going to step up and say, "We can do something. We can be part of this solution"? At our town hall meetings last year, every single town hall resulted in people saying, "We need to do something ourselves. We need to figure out something on the revenue side where we can step up and make a contribution." And Dr. Evans is exactly right. We've got parents who are making a contribution this year. We've got every person on this staff, from the office clerks in the schools, to the bus drivers, to the cafeteria workers, to the teachers, to the people in administration. Everybody in this school district is making a sacrifice this year. And in some cases, that's over $1,000, maybe over $2,000 that people are contributing out of their pocket to help solve this crisis for next year. So people are already stepping up. The question is, are all of us, as people in San Diego, all of us who depend on the quality of the public school system, are we all willing to step up and make a contribution? That's a decision that we have in front of us, and that's the decision about Prop J. So we're going to push each other, like we always do, to generate more and more options, to find rocks that don't exist and turn them over and find ways to try to desperately protect as much as we can of the needs of kids in the way that we balance a budget. Of course, we're going to do that. We've done that the last two years, and our colleagues, Mr. Dubeck, Ms. Jackson, and Mrs. Nakamura have done that for a lot longer than the last two years. We will do that, but that's not going to protect our kids. That kind of process to try to figure out, how do we generate other options to fill a $140 million hole? If we've got a $140 million hole, our kids are not just going to be hurt, they're going to be devastated. And is the legislature and the governor this year going to face up to their responsibilities to our kids? Is the next governor and the next legislature, are they going to face up to their responsibilities to our kids? And are we, as San Diegans, going to face up to our responsibilities as our kids? Those are the decision points in front of us. That's the way that we've got to fill this hole.
If I could add one more element of that, and this is just a pitch for, and this is very small in comparison to everything that we're facing, but last year, we did organize our PTAs into the Sacramento Safari, and we're having PTA open houses all across San Diego right now. Every PTA unit in San Diego is supposed to identify someone to go up for the Leg Action Conference, Legislative Action Conference that the PTA holds every year in February. This year, it's going to be more important than ever. We really need to identify, ask for our PTAs to specifically name someone and fund that trip up to Sacramento for them. I think the district should, again, in February, provide advocacy training about specifically what the issues are in this district that are part of the PTA platform that we support, that we want to push. I mean, we should help build that platform in concert with the PTA, but we really should have the PTA up this year. They should put money in their budget already, because you're right, it's Proposition J, it's who the governor's going to be, and it's going to be, we're going to have a new governor, whoever it is, and new members of the legislature. I think an important voice that we need in San Diego is that PTA voice. There were only, the year before, we only had one person from the PTA. This year, we had 10. I think we ought to make it a goal that we have every single PTA represented at the Leg Action Conference up in Sacramento. Parents have got to stand up, teachers have got to stand up, and we need to vote for Prop J, and we need, you're right, we do need to think about who's going to be governor next year, because it's going to matter. It's going to matter a lot.
If I could just highlight one more thing for you, just actually one date that I would like us to look at, and that is the November 16 date on this timeline.
Yeah.
For us to meet our obligations to the county for the first interim and for providing the information that we're required to provide. We do need decisions at that November 16 board workshop. I put "final" there only because it's the time for decision at that point, for us to be able to do the work that we have to do, because we have the entire week of Thanksgiving now furloughed for the administration, so we're not here to work that week. So that's something I would like you to keep in mind. We want to meet your expectations, we want to provide you the information that you want, and that's pretty much our outside timeline for achieving decisions.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any further questions or comments?
I'd just like to compliment also on, thank you for giving us that timeline and being so clear with the public about that. Anybody who hasn't read this PowerPoint, the timeline and how this marches through the year, you know, for classified and for certificated for our teachers, is, those are important to know and getting the game started early. I do appreciate that.
If I could just say one thing as well, that we appreciate the feedback regarding expanding the options of where we look, and that as you described, the push and pull between ourselves and the board, that we also are having those kind of difficult discussions within our own staff to talk about how we better serve the students. And looking at some of these options, as both of us agree, they include things that really gut our thriving programs, from half-day kindergarten to dropout prevention, from A to Z. What we're seeing are cuts that will severely impact our students. So we want to assure you that we will continue to explore.
Dan.
Let me add to Nellie's wrap-up, too. Some of the actions, clearly the PTA advocacy, we'll work on that one. I'll ask Bernie to work with me, and I think we have already a session ago talked to the PTA at the end of the month, early next month, I can't remember what on the calendar.
I've pitched it to them, and every time I've talked about Proposition J and gone out to, I've been invited to quite a few schools and asked to speak about Proposition J, I've added that piece into that presentation, because now's the time they make decisions about their budget.
Some other things, we'll come back with a definition of what's in those reserves, so there is no confusion beyond the reserve economic uncertainty. And ask you all and the community and our staff that have listened in or participated tonight, any and all ideas to come back. I mean, there are other ones. We'll define the central office. You can debate all day you want on what's in or what's out of the central office, whether you have a manager on site here in this building or actively moving between campuses all day, and we've had that conversation, we can define that. The atypical schools, good example of something more than just a school, other departments. And by saying that, I don't mean to create anxiety, but there is anxiety out there, but we hear you. I mean, we've had this, I mean, it's remarkable that this team, the board and the district staff, are now veterans of five years in the budget wars. I mean, it's just terrible, but we know where we have to go.
I would assume that the reserves include encumbered money for other things or else. I mean, you know, and if that's the case, that would be an appropriate thing, but I cannot look at a number that's different than the numbers that the public has heard and seen and not have it broken down in a way that's understandable. I mean, I just can't.
We'll give that to you.
Accept that.
Dan.
I just want to emphasize the importance of these town hall meetings, and along with what Dr. Meyer was saying about the damage and the devastation to the kids, I mean, every horrible thing that's on this list has repercussions far beyond even that particular cut. If we do away with nurses, for example, there will be more kids out of school more often, not be evaluated at school, the ADA will go down, and so that will decrease our revenue even further. If we don't have counselors, we don't have police officers, we're going to have all kinds of incidents and things on campus that are going to affect us socially, they're going to affect us financially. It's very expensive, as I said before, to be poor. I mean, you end up cutting things that are going to end up costing you more and more, but if we don't have the money, that's what we're facing. This board has been very committed to working with the communities, finding out how people are feeling about this, what action people want to take. And that's why I just really encourage everybody to come out. We have nine meetings throughout the district in September and October in each area of the city, and I know the first one is tomorrow night at San Diego High School at 6:30, and there will be eight other meetings in the coming weeks. And I think that everybody who cares about public education, and that can be parents, teachers, administrators, but also community members, we all have a stake in what's going on in our public schools.
Thank you.